It's ten o'clock, Wednesday, October twenty-second. Called the Montague County Commission meeting to order. Ask that you please stand for a moment of silent meditation and remain standing for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Diane.
This morning, exonerations, we have ten listings, three thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-six cents for tax years two thousand thirteen and fourteen. Fiduciary orders as of October twenty-second and approval of services for Lynn Crane, fiduciary commissioner. Vouchers, General County Fund, eight hundred ten thousand seven, five oh seven eighty-two. General County Fund Purchasing Card, twenty-nine thousand one seventy-one eighty-eight. Coal Severance Fund, seven thousand five twelve sixty-four. Kent Muffley, one thousand one eighty-seven thirty-three. Chestnut Ridge Park, five thousand five ninety-five oh one. Mason Dixon Park, seven thirty-eight ninety-seven. Mason Dixon Park Purchasing Card, two hundred forty dollars forty-seven cents. Assessors Valuation Fund, nineteen dollars forty cents. Home Confinement Fund, one thousand five sixty-four thirty-five. A total of eight fifty-six, five thirty-seven eighty-seven. And I have one budget revision. This one we discussed last week, but it's actually increasing the miscellaneous revenue by forty thousand dollars and increasing dams and dredging by forty thousand. And this will accommodate the pass-through funds and keep them separate in a line item that we can recognize when we start dispersing this.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion for approval on a second, all in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carry. Renetta.
Just have one item for reimbursement today. JABG grant for September of two thousand fourteen for two thousand three thirty-one thirty-five. That's all the reimbursements I have this morning.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion.
Have a motion. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify if I'm saying aye. Post. Motion carry.
Twice you've done that today.
I almost signed Tom Bloom's name right here, too. I'm not sure about that.
That's all right.
I also have a grant award from the West Virginia Bureau of Senior Services for the Tryon Hallak Senior Center for three thousand dollars.
Oh, great.
Move for approval of the three thousand dollars. Second. Grant award.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. You're welcome. Proclamation for domestic violence awareness month. That's you, huh? You want to state your names?
Yes, if we have further record.
We have.
Brittany Warren.
Are you with the domestic violence?
Yeah, I work with Domestic Violence Information Center.
Okay.
Proclamation, whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, indignity, security, and humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers and are supported by societal indifferences. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community throughout the United States and the world. And whereas it is battered women themselves who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home, now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by the Rape and Domestic Violence Information Center, serving Montague, Yip, Preston, and Taylor Counties, as well as all other domestic violence programs, the Montague County Commission does hereby proclaim the month of October to be National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges all citizens to actively participate in the scheduled activities and programs to work toward improving victim safety and holding perpetrators of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and society as a whole.
Move to approve, the proclamation is ready.
Second. Have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. One thing that I'd like to comment on, in nineteen, I think it was ninety-four, I did a study on a number of charges for domestic violence. Magistrate Caroline Stoker was very helpful. And domestic violence was second only to bad check actions. You know, and it would be interesting for domestic violence cases is if we could have a data on the number of cases reported and just as important is how many individuals are involved in the number of cases. Because I think what we'd find is a very small percentage are doing all the violence.
That's true.
And probably repetitive. But unless you have the statistical data to back it up, you know, I don't know where bad check warrants, the charges fall now, but in ninety-four, I believe it was, that was the most common charge in magistrate court.
Yeah. What I found interesting, well, not interesting, but kind of opened your eyes was, oh, I can't remember who it was, Ronald Reagan's, I think he was Secretary of Interior, was exposed of supposedly beating his wife and children on a regular basis. It really jumped out to me and to a lot of other people that you're, it has nothing to do. You think, you think, oh, well, you know, someone goes to the bar and, no, very highly-qualified professionals that may be financially very stable and in powerful positions, they do this, too. And too many times, those sort of people that are the hidden group that you never get a hold of, they hide, they hide the fact so well because of their position and power. So I really appreciate all the work you do to probably never bring us up to it, but we can certainly crack. And I know it'd be a lot worse for one for your all's efforts.
You know, another area I think that should be, data should be maintained on is geographical in the county to see if there is, some of the housing areas isn't the main contributor or contributes a lot. I just think we missed the boat by not compiling statistical data so that, so that people who have, have to deal with it can make informed decisions, not just that we got to do something about domestic violence.
And one of the things that concerned me as the guidance house for thirty-six years is what it has the effect on the children and also what they believe is the right way to deal with a problem and also what we also see, and I call it domestic violence, also situations, boyfriend-girlfriend issues in the high school. It is unbelievable how much we deal with and ask for your help in their situations because it's almost acceptable behavior and that's something we cannot have.
Do you like to get a picture with us?
Yes, sir.
The president presenting it?
See, they see. Like that chair for him.
Smile.
We have a couple of cameras. Oh, we got more. Is this a pussy?
One more.
Ready?
Oh, there's one more back there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's really good.
Don't Judy, I said, aye.
I need a helping hand here.
Okay.
So the chair doesn't kick.
Boy, I'm going to face it today. Yeah, really.
Thank you.
I can't imagine what I'd buy the beer.
Correspondence.
This isn't really correspondence, but the announcement that the county commission would like to invite the public to the grand opening of the newly renovated bathhouse at Chestnut Ridge Park. It's going to be Friday, October twenty-fourth, from one until about three. Has some light refreshments and the bathhouse is beautiful. What a great experience.
Bobby, could you?
This will be at Chestnut Ridge Park.
Could you just elaborate a little bit about this bathhouse so people understand the significance of it?
They really have to see it, but yeah, we took the old Shire House up there and we added on to it and totally redid it. It's brick, it's stone all on the outside, ceramic tile all on the inside. It's just, it's all redone. You just have to see it to believe it.
Do you, we know how many people it'll accommodate?
There is.
At once?
There's some problems here.
Two regular Shires, then we have.
No group Shires.
We have an ADA Shire.
Oh, good.
Restrooms and everything.
Okay.
On each side.
Any more correspondence?
No.
Unfinished business.
I actually have something, but I want to make sure Diane's been, make sure I have to be careful how I say it. Today at one o'clock is the announcement of the new naming of our new professional baseball team. We're very excited about it and I'm not allowed to say anything.
Cut it off right now.
Looking forward to it.
Sloppy in the back of the head, boy. You've got to be careful.
Yeah, but I just can't wear a wig.
It's not, it's not public yet, then?
It's not public and there is no truth to rumor the jam. He's going to be a mascot.
Only big payday, let my grandson be bat boy.
Yeah. Sounds good.
He wants to bat, he wants to play shortstop and bat first and third.
That sounds good. But I'm very excited, but we can say there were over ten thousand votes to give you an idea how the answer is, ten thousand votes. So I just will say that.
I think we also need to thank.
Yes.
The new general manager for the pro team and the assistant general manager.
I think we need to invite those two guys for a work session and so that we can discuss with them our concern about they, the company that owns it, the rich family, are very family-oriented. And I think we need to let them know that we are, too.
Right.
And that we want that place to be affordable to local people. And I think we need to build a relationship with them because there's also a factor of rent. And whether we forego rent for other amenities remains to be seen. So I would like to see at some point here in the very near future to arrange a work session meeting with both of those guys.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be good. Matthew Drayer, the new general manager, and John Porgoswowski, I think is the way it's pronounced. I don't know, it has got Polish in me, but I can pronounce it. My uncle would know how to pronounce it, I don't know. But we want to thank them. They had a very nice ceremony last night for the, the people that expressed to me that they believe were intimately involved in getting them to come to Morgantown.
We probably ought to invite all of the luck to be in on that work session so that we have a university rep.
We want to do that, yeah.
During the discussions with who's going to manage that.
Or his rep, yeah.
We want to make sure we communicate clearly to everybody.
And they are local now?
Yes.
Yeah. They're looking, one renting an apartment, the other's looking for a house.
There was one area they weren't allowed to.
His wife made it clear, though, she's not moving back to Grant Haven.
Yeah.
That's what she said.
They also hired a local.
Oh, that's right.
They did?
Yeah, they hired Ernie Galuski as assistant GM for operations.
For operations.
Well, we ought to maybe include him in our meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a good, yeah.
Yeah, we should, definitely include him. They just announced last night, so I don't have his card yet.
Yes. We don't have a time on this public hearing for consideration zoning map amendment.
It's setting, it's setting.
Oh, wait a minute, there is a time, ten forty-five.
It's setting at for November the twelfth.
Oh, that's all we're doing?
Yes, you're just doing a motion to.
We're supposed to wait till then?
No. Do it now.
I move that we set a hearing for consideration of zoning map amendment for Maple Drive on Wednesday, November twelfth, two thousand fourteen, at ten forty-five.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carry. Reports from elected officials and department supervisors. Let's, Diane.
Sheriff has a few more tickets to suspend from the tax list.
He has what?
A few more listings to be removed from the tax list.
He's going to suspend some more tickets?
Yes.
Join the list of what they're handed out.
You all been busy, that's for sure.
We've been busy. What we presented you with today are two, well, one letter is on three parcels of property, three different pieces of property that are owned by West Virginia University. And there are in the code that's cited here, eleven eighty-three seven, it says that if we believe there may be a problem with properties that we have to ask the commission to suspend them from the tax lien sale. So on those three properties, the university is saying that they own them and they are being used for university educational purposes.
Can you give us a little more specific location so that we under, have a better understanding where they're located?
Kelly, do you have any?
Kelly?
Other than the ward.
Seventh ward.
It's a United Bank Center, where the United Bank Center is, and the other is the Showies property.
Oh, okay, that's where they put in the soccer field, right?
I love that.
Love that.
Actually, Showies.
It's the actual Showies building.
And what about the one in Star City? Where's it at?
That's a Showies.
That's a Showies, okay.
There's two in seventh for them, but that's.
The two in seventh ward are the two United, the two parcels at the United Center?
Correct. Yeah, one is, I think, parcel sixty-nine and one is parcel.
Where Applebee's is and then one.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, we should have put that in.
I'll, I'll, you need the motions, maybe?
Yes.
I move that we authorize the suspension of these three properties.
I'll second, but could we, I'm still a little confused. Why, why are we actually suspending it? Because.
We're suspending them from sales.
Oh, oh.
We're not going to auction it off on them.
Okay, that's it, okay. Now I understand.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carry.
And the second one is on a piece of property in the Clinton district area, the Clinton area. And for the same reason, this was the property that has been double assessed since nineteen sixty-seven on the land books of the county assessors office. And there was a tax deed issued to Mark Myers for tax year two thousand twelve. He bought that property at a lien sale.
Lien sale.
And however, there's a question as to whether this is a valid tax deed due to the duplicate assessment in the name of Solomon for that year. So we're not sure right now who legally has ownership of that property.
So you got three people there, Myers, Devers, and Solomon?
Yes.
That should be fun to sort out.
It'll be interesting, but because of that and we haven't, or the assessors office nor us has determined exactly for sure who legally owns that piece of property.
You don't want to add, you don't want to add a fourth person to that list?
Don't want to add a fourth person, no.
I can understand that. I would move that we authorize the suspension of this property from the lien sale.
Okay. Have a motion?
I move that we authorize suspension of this property.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carry. Anything else, Sheriff?
That's, that's it. It was a fun weekend.
That was going to say.
Yeah, you might want to stay around because I, we want to talk.
I, I just have a question. I noticed in today's paper, they were going to establish some kind of center for, in reaction to this riot that took place. And it mentioned, well, my question is, it mentioned everybody but the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Actually, what the university was talking about doing when establishing the center that they're talking about is that they're going to identify, when they identify, students that were involved. My understanding is right now, just left a meeting, it's a nine-one-one center to come down here. My understanding is so far, there have been about twenty to twenty-five students that have been recognized. President Gee has already authorized that they be expelled.
Good for President Gee.
But that center is going to be set up so that when, there's an anticipation of something like this happening again, it would be monitored in social media outlets. And what they'll have there is students from student government that will then counter those social media posts that are going out by students saying, let's, like this incident took place, we're going to start this first wave at ten o'clock, the next one will start at eleven. They'll have people from student council then counter that by saying, don't do that, here are the ramifications if you do this, if you're involved, so to hopefully avert any of those major problems like we had this week.
So was this orchestrated?
It was.
Yeah.
More.
By, by media.
It's very nice people.
You know, I don't know how this commission feels, but I would certainly entertain the motion that we commend President Gee and let him know that we fully support the disciplinary action and that we're all in agreement that there needs to be consequences for inappropriate or illegal behavior.
I'll make the motion as stated by President Bartolo.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carry.
And I'm going to bring this up under my report, so when we get to my reports.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
What do you have? Assessors Office. Nothing? Town of Greenville.
Nothing, sir.
City of Westover.
Why'd you wait till last to ask me? I don't understand.
W.
Sitting in the front row.
Amen.
Westover with a W.
Amen.
I had feelings.
Amen. They say save the best for last.
Put it that way, I have nothing to it.
Okay, anything else, Diane? Bobby? Renetta? Jambi?
I have one thing.
Okay.
I'm happy to announce that at all three of our parks now, Kent Muffley has joined the other two in becoming pet friendly.
Great.
You're now allowed to bring your pets into Muffley and enjoy family time with them. And, you know, because pets are a big part of families. And you can take your pet out there and enjoy the park, enjoy everything, enjoy your family with them, as long as you obey the leash laws and the other laws and clean up after them. We're happy to entertain the pets.
Very good, very good. That's a very good decision, I think.
Thank you.
You ought to recognize Tim there because this is his last time he's going to abandon us from Michigan.
Oh, is he?
He ought to give a little speech.
Oh, Tim.
Yeah, Tim, please, you get, you get your option, yeah.
Comment you want to make, Tim?
I could do like all the other officials and say nothing to report, but, you know, I just want to thank everybody here at the commission and all the heads of the departments and, and the assorted public officials for giving me the opportunity to learn a heck of a lot about how not only local government can work, but in my opinion, how local government should work. It's nice to see a group of people get together. Of course, you got to remember what I'm comparing it against. I spent about a year and a, about a year or so covering Detroit City Council. But it is nice to see a group of people get together and be able to actually get things done and not get bogged down in governmental red tape and infighting and et cetera, et cetera. But, and my opportunity here to be able to report on that kind of thing and bring those, those stories out to the public has been a real, real learning experience for me and I'd like to thank everybody here for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll be missed.
Very much. I think we have a couple of new students in the back. We have a, our protocol is that we'd like, if you would, to please stand and just introduce yourself and what class you're associated with.
All right, I'm Justin Holstein, I'm a geography major and it's a requirement to attend a city council meeting or a commission meeting or something of that kind.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming. Reports from county commissioners. Eldon.
I spent two days in Charleston, which was rather eventful in a way. I represented the commission and I just wanted to report that I did make it very clear that this commission has made no decision as to any sort of local sales tax or any other sort of funding mechanism that we might use. However, I did carry the message that it was absolutely necessary that the legislature start looks at alternatives that our infrastructure needs. We have a four hundred, over four hundred twenty-four million dollars of road improvements we need to get done. A hundred and twen, a hundred and twenty-eight million, a hundred and seventy-eight million, excuse me, is, is priority one. And it doesn't look like we're going to be able to fund them in the next five to ten years, which when we get priority one done, it will just get us up to two thousand fourteen standards. So the, so the message we're carrying, I was happy to go along with the Chamber of Commerce and their different plans and proposals and ideas, to ask that the House, the Joint House and Senate Committee on Infrastructure study this issue as to how that it would be proper to, to find better means to fund road construction because we desperately need it. One of the, one of the things I emphasized when I was asked, which is always interest whenever I go to Charleston, invariably, I can't go for more than three hours without someone reminding me how wealthy we are in Montague County. And I don't care if it's officials or someone, someone will say, oh, you have all the money in the world up there. Oh, you have all this money. What are you going down here? You have so much money up here? I heard it over and over again. But I emphasized that it's our belief that the people that needs to pay for the roads, because I was brought up by one of, one of the delegates, that, that, well, we have so much money and we're, we're so wealthy property-wise that we ought to just raise the taxes and pay for the roads ourselves. And I absolutely shut that down. That is not proper to make the residents and the businesses pay for the roads when you, fifty-five percent or more of the people that work in, that travel the roads, clogs them up, are not from this county, which means they wouldn't pay a penny. And then the rest of them come in for special events and stuff. So I strongly urge Senator Beach and his committee and Delegate Staggers and her committee to, to study this, this issue and really try to move forward on it. And I carried this commission's support of that message.
Okay. Tom? Yeah, first, I just want to, just real quickly, it just, I'm really glad it's you going down there, not me, because it just infuriates me, this West Virginia tunnel vision down in the southern part of the state. So what they're saying is because the community here is successful, because we diversified, because we're moving forward, we're punished. And that, that just, pardon, I don't care, it's asinine. And I'm really tired, something has to be done about. With that being said, I know we don't want to rehash what happened Saturday, but I think we have to at least make a comment about it for our constituents. The first thing I want you to know is I, on behalf of the county commission, I went to the Morgantown Fire Department representing our thank yous for what they went through and we really wanted to support them and thank them, so, and they were very appreciative of that. And I first want to say, you know, first, how proud I am of the football team and the fans who attended the game. They stayed the entire game and kept the noise level so high that it clearly affected Baylor's team. It was a great win and well-deserved. However, the actions by a small group of individuals spurred on by the crowd on High Street and Grand Avenue are embarrassing and not acceptable on any level. The national exposure that we are getting only amplifies the stigma that we continue to try and change. After reviewing the reports. After reviewing the reports, I'm thrilled to see that no policeman or fireman was seriously injured. However, what they had to endure was atrocious. They were pelted by rocks, beer bottles, and construction materials. Police cars were damaged, groups of individuals, along with students, ran into construction sites and took materials. And there was property damage, and the cost is extensive. And finally, not all the hooligans, as I call them, we're WVU students. We need to be very careful who we blame. As in the past, many are high school and college age individuals who look forward to events such as this one. However, it doesn't matter who they are. I am, would not, I will not be lenient on those who choose to act as, and I call them destructive criminals. We have to stop this behavior and we need everyone to work together to resolve this. And I want to thank WVU President Gordon Gee on this issue for his support and his strong stance. And I believe the three of us will look forward to working with him and the others to resolve this issue. The biggest amazement is we have to learn how to celebrate when we win. Thank you.
Well, you know, the other thing that you have to sort of keep in mind is if we're going to play Major League Football, beating the number four team in the country shouldn't be the reason for a riot. I mean, if, if we're expecting to have a quality team, then, then that should be our challenge and that should be, uh, just as a matter of a fact that, uh, we have a, uh, top flight football team. And that when anyone comes in here, regardless of the ranking, they have to contend with the Mountaineers. And I think the students detracted from that. To, to beat Baylor, to beat a number four ranked team, to make it like, uh, years ago when, when they would beat someone that had a winning record, that that was a major accomplishment, uh, I, I think we, we need to move past that. Uh, and I, and I really attribute, I think that's one of the things that Oliver Luck is, is the athletic director has tried to do, is to try to move West Virginia athletics into the big leagues. Uh, and to do that, we have to accept the fact that, that that's our standard. That's not an out of the ordinary accomplishment. And I, and I think that's unfortunately speaks to the incident that took place by beating a number four team, that that's some, it's an accomplishment. And it adds to their record, but it's not so unusual that we need to tear up our city as a result of it or our community. The other comment I have is in line with, uh, reading the newspaper about, uh, and then hearing your report today about the Chamber of Commerce and proposing, uh, the, uh, road. You know, we all know, uh, that it's been repetitive, it's been consistent. And we, that, uh, coming out of Charleston, the legislature is, counties need to step up and do something about it, uh, the infrastructure. Uh, my, uh, my concern is that, uh, that needs to be Monongate County stepping up. Uh, and working in cooperation with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, working in cooperation with MMPO. But if we're going to establish some guidelines and controls to help contribute to roads, then it ought to be this commission that makes that decision, not, not, and I, I don't mean this with any animosity, I just mean it with definition, not the Chamber of Commerce, not the MMPO, but the Monongate County Commission that has elected officials. Uh, you know, I think, I think we've reached a point in the way that we can, I think, pursue this and the way that's appropriate to pursue it is with county home rule. Uh, and I think after this election, I would like to see us arrange a meeting, involve the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, involve MMPO and our elected officials, whoever they may be. And to get us united in a, uh, goal of getting the legislature to grant us county home rule so that we can sit down and solve our own problems without being dictated to by people in the legislature that don't even visit this county. Uh, so, uh, I'd like to throw that out that, uh, uh, that we set that, uh, and, and entertain a motion that we, after the election, that we set that meeting.
I, I, I would make that motion and, 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 uh, add that, uh, yeah, that, that's the message, uh, that, uh, that we need to, to carry. And, and I, I believe from my discussions with the various groups that, that they understand the importance of it being set up, just as you described. So I would make that motion.
And I'll second, and I really like the idea of the newly elected members in the House and Senate come to this meeting because I think that's key. We can talk about, but we need them to actually do it. So I, I second that.
I have a motion in a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Good idea.
I would like, I'd like to add one thing.
Sure.
One thing. If you're finished.
Yeah, I'm done.
Uh, I think I texted, uh, from Charleston when I heard about all this stuff going on. And ba- basically, the, the point is, is we now have a championship caliber team. They proved it. And that team deserves championship caliber fans. We didn't have that by a small group. The majority of the pa- fans are championship. But as, as Bill said, we've got to be championship fans to support our championship team.
Anything else?
No, just.
Any comments from the public? Anyone? Any other com- yes, ma'am?
I'd like to add what you, you was just talking about, uh, countywide home rule or something along that lines. You know, we don't have what used, what we used to have, and I'm not sure how or when that changed, but it used to be such a thing as county roads. That's all state roads.
Nineteen thirty-three.
It's been that long?
Yeah.
Day after I'm born. But, uh, you know, they, and that, that can go in, in line with what you say about people from the southern part of the state talking about how much money we have in this county. Because of the property and everything. But, you know, there has to be a way that there's some sort of way to fund these roads and, and be able to do it on the county level, even if it's just dividing the, the divisions of the Department of Highways. In other words, we have one in a tri- a tri-county area, you know, whatever tax, I'm, I'm sure some of the gasoline tax goes toward, toward, uh, the, the maintenance on the highways.
Yeah, it's also supposed to.
That should be important, you know, your school taxes all go, not all that tax stays in this county. It goes to the, the smaller counties that don't have the tax base, that some of the larger counties have. Well, you know, we have a lot of people in this town, a lot of developers in the city. We have a lot of businesses in the city that aren't affected by VNO tax because they're not supporting a municipality or participating in a municipality. So if you do have some sort of home rule, some way of capturing something that, that could be applied to whatever the needs of the county are. And you're absolutely right, the MMPO, the Chamber of Commerce, they're not the leaders of this county. The elected officials are the leaders of this county in these cities. So they, we're the ones that should have the input and actually, we're the ones that should come up with the ideas and the process that we need to use to fund a lot of these projects. And get, you know, if we got such a great county, let's do some more things, Charles.
Yeah, one, one of the.
We proved that we can do it, so it's not a problem.
I, 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 I agree with you. One of the things I emphasize to the joint committee down there is that, uh, we're all in it together. We got to all work together, we got to participate, everyone's got to participate, we got to collaborate. Uh, the, the, uh, I did get, I did get a positive response out of the DOH and, uh, from the governor's office that they're shocked as how well Monongate County is working together nowadays. And, uh, I, I, I think that speaks volumes to the elected officials, uh, from the municipal level as well as, uh, or county elected officials to, to work together, uh, not only amongst ourselves but with the chamber and, uh, the unions and everyone that's involved, anyone that has any interest. That speaks volumes of the, the strides that we've made in the last few years.
You know, I've been, I've been accused over the last few years of having a personal agenda as far as Westover is concerned, as far as all the annexation. We can, so what, I'm going, you know, throw me in jail.
Trying to better, better the town.
We can all have a personal agenda as long as it's applied to something that's going to affect everybody.
Well, you know, the, the, uh, I think we need to all have the philosophy that if, if the town of Granville prospers, Star City, Westover, then we all prosper. And, and I think we need to adopt that attitude. The other thing that we need to do is we need to come to the realization we cannot place tax burdens solely on the backs of property owners. You know, when you hear from Charleston and you hear.
You're at as far as the county level, because they don't have a VNO tax.
Right.
Well, well, that's why we need to be creative. And the only way we're going to be able to be creative is to get home rule. Uh, if we don't, if we can't accomplish home rule, then it will be continued to dictate to us, well, raise your levy tax. Well, the only people you're going to get to pay is property owners. What about non-property owners? Uh, what about people that are passing through, using the roads?
The users of them.
Uh, you know, we, we need to have, you know, and I, the first thing that comes to mind is a one cent sales tax. Everybody pays it, whether you're passing through, whether you're a student, regardless of what you do. Uh, I mean, we need to think in those terms, a creative way, so that everybody carries their fair share. And that, uh, property tax owners or payers are not the sole source of public funding.
I'd like to, I'd like to add the message that you just mentioned there was another message that I carried down there, is that this is, this, the pro- uh, the prosperity of Monongate County passes to other counties. Roads and the transportation and development of those roads pass beyond the county lines. Preston County can develop, Marion County can develop, Wetzel County can develop, Taylor County can develop. And when they develop, they, Grant County, Miller County, Tucker County, Harrison County.
Is it domino effect?
Is it domino effect?
That's, 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 was a part of the message I carried. We can, if we're willing to all accept success, it's kind of interesting because it's kind of fits with what the basket, the, or the football team just went to. If we're willing to accept and fight for success for all of us, then we all become champions. And that's the only way West Virginia's going to get out of forty-eighth, forty-ninth on most everything.
Anything else?
Move for adjournment?
I have a motion to.
Comment from the public there.
Oh, a comment from the public? I have a motion to adjourn in a second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We are adjourned.